We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, May the 6th, 2025, and welcome everyone to join us here. We have all of our council. We're missing one tonight, the council member Anderson, who's out of town, and we have majority of our staff and also some general public people who've joined us here. And also, we welcome those who who have joined us electronically. So now move to our number two. We'll have a Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jensen, after which we'll have opening remarks by Councilmember Rogers.
Audience, please rise. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered here as a council and mayor and with some of our staff and some of our residents. We're grateful for the community that we live in and we're grateful for its residents and their support of one another. We mourn with the members of our community who are suffering and who are reeling from recent tragedies that have occurred in our city. We ask that I'll be with them, help them to comprehend and feel thy love close, help us as neighbors to look out for one another and to be courteous and respectful, and help us to find ways to lift one another's burdens. Help us tonight as we discuss important matters of the city that we can understand what would be the best course of action, be prudent and safe for our citizens and for our residents. We're grateful for the country we live in and the freedoms we enjoy to assemble, to express our opinions and to hold differing opinions, help us to respect one another, and to treat one another with love and kindness. We love thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve and Eric. We'll now ask for approval of tonight's meeting agenda. We don't have any adjustments, so we'll have a motion.
Mayor will make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to our open session and invite anyone to come forward and address the council at this time, and we'll allot you three minutes. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back to the front here and move on to our consent items, which involve consent items A through J that you had on your previous reviewed, and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent items as listed on the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We don't have any board commission or committee appointments this evening or presentations, and we'll move right on to our item number nine on our one public hearing for this evening, which is 9A, a public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-007, amending section 10-19-2, sign definitions and adopting section 10-19-9-5 to consider a new type of sign called project identification signs. These signs are intended to be large monument-type identifying signs on the commercial developers that advertise the development as a whole instead of individual businesses. The applicant is St. George Properties, and we'll turn time over to Director Cardenas.
Amazing what a change in personnel will take.
She was worth all the money we spent on her.
She's already worth it. Good work, Sierra.
Mayor, council, what we have right here in front of us is an application from St. John's Properties. I think the applicant, Marty's here in the back, and what they're proposing is they're proposing a new type of sign, a new type of sign that they're calling, that we call, while we work on this co-text amendment, a project identification sign. So it's a type of a sign that doesn't exist in our city currently. Okay? We, of course, we took a look at different city codes. We talked to the applicant multiple times, trying to come up with something that kind of like meets their intentions, but at the same time that protects the city for future developments. And this is an idea when we were talking to the applicant, the main idea where this came from. This is a project from St. John's Properties as well. It's a property in Maryland, I'm assuming Baltimore, correct. And if you can see that sign right there, that's a sign that is quite a large sign. So it's a monument type of a sign, monument meaning that it's attached to the ground. There's kind of like landscape decorations around, but it's, let's call it a magnified glorified monument sign. It's way bigger than a regular monument sign. Okay? So then we start working with the applicant. We, of course, tried to find similar signs in the state of Utah, and when I go to the outlets in Lehigh, or is that Draper, either or, we can take a look at that one right there. That's also similar. That's a monument sign, but it's a big monument sign. It's, we call it a project identification sign. We take a look, has the name of the of the project, and in this case, yeah, it's just the name of the project. In some cases, they have the name of the project and the name of the main developer. Okay? There's, this is a case of a commercial project identification sign. In Utah, we also have something like that. Okay? That's for a residential case. We can see the different type of architecture designs, if you want to call them that way. Let me see if I think I have another one right here. Yeah, we have a smaller one in our city. That's kind of like a monument sign. It could also be a wall sign, but when I was talking to the applicant, we were talking to the applicant, we were, okay, let's define what a project identification sign is. And then we decided a project identification sign will have two elements, very important. It will have the name of the project, okay, and it will have the name of the primary developer. So in the case of St. John's Properties, they're the main developer, the name of the project, Valley Grove, and it will be a monument-like sign to set apart a commercial development. We went a little further, talking with the applicant. He presented us kind of like what they're proposing to do, and I'm going to show you now an image of the sign they're proposing to do. So we can see again, it's a monument-like type of a sign, touch the ground, and this person supposed to be six feet, probably six, yeah.
Five ten.
Five ten, just calculating from here. But if we see the sign is the maximum sign that we that we set out for is at 12 feet. So it's a tall type of a sign. Okay? That's the difference than a regular monument sign. A regular monument sign usually are, they don't go taller than six, seven feet. In this case, this one will go taller than that. And the area is about 200, 200 square feet. The location for the sign, and they already have an idea where they'll put it, is, we can take a look at this image right here. Arnor BBQ is right here, and it's just across west of our barbecue. So this is a
Yeah, you can just make that a little bigger. Can you just like pinch that out?
Yeah, let's make it bigger. Let's see. I think, ah, it's because I need to enable editing. Give me one second. Okay. Going to go back to it. There we go. And I'm going to do it like this. Sorry. I'm going to send it behind text. And just for kicks and giggles, I'm going to do it like right here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that fine?
So Arnor BBQ is just on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It will be in this side. Okay?
Yep.
So as we work with the applicant, we came up with some specification for this type of sign. For example, again, this type of signs will only belong to what we call a unified commercial development. Some time ago, with the city council, the planning commission, we worked on a type of project that Valley Grove fits perfectly on it, which is a commercial development. This is only for commercial in our city. It won't work for residential. It will only be for commercial projects that are master planned and that are at least 20 acres in size. Okay? Of course, we worked on some specifications where the location should be. They need to be approved by the city engineer as well. We put some limits on the height. We put some limits on the area. We presented to the planning commission, and we tell the planning commission, there's only one of these signs per unified commercial development. So one of these signs per 20 acres, and they thought more will be beneficial. But at the end of the day, once we work on this, we settle into one sign, and they unanimously send a recommendation of approval. Okay? Yes.
Can I just ask why? Why just one? Why you guys recommend just one? I mean, because they have another entrance down on the left, right?
Yeah, so on the other side, it's going to be residential. If, I'm going to look at this aerial view from right here. Let's see.
I mean, coming off of North County Boulevard is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there's
I'm just curious. I just
Yeah, I think it's a massive sign. It's a big sign. So it's not like, it's a sign that you will see from far away. If we just give us an idea, I came and measured this roof. This roof is nine and a half feet. Imagine that plus three more feet. That's how tall this sign will be. So we think that the mass of the of the sign is appropriate for 20 acres, and one will be will be will be okay.
But nothing on, but nothing on North County Boulevard?
It could be, depending on what
On the other side, right?
Yeah. Again, let me pull up this aerial view. Let's see if we can see it right here.
That development is bigger than this one?
Yeah, that development is, yeah, correct.
So they want to put one somewhere else?
But so the sign that is proposed, proposed right here, right now.
So Daniel, I'm talking like right here somewhere they could possibly put one there?
Eventually, they can, but that will be probably 20 more acres, right? Just this area right here that is not developed is 40 acres, but the half of this will be probably residential. So it fits for this area right here to have only one. Probably they want to do one for this and this later in the future. That's up to them, but they have to prove to us how they, how it fits their unified commercial development area. Okay?
I guess what I'm most concerned about is just like, that sign looks great, but I don't want like a big cement block that's 12 feet by 20 feet long. So what kind of design protections do we have?
It's complicated to come up with a specific designs because luckily, they have a sign already in mind, but for us to decide exactly the design that we want, it's it's not that, I mean, there's no code that will tell us, for example, like it has to be green letters and cannot be, I don't know, maybe something that we can do that we look into it, for example, was just make sure that it doesn't, that it's not solid, that doesn't block the view in a corner.
And that was my concern was was the view.
No, we took care of that.
But also, I think if we're going to go above and beyond what we're normally approving for signage, to Steve's point that we don't want the majority to be concrete, and then for visibility, but also just the look of it to be a huge, I mean, if 12 feet's big, so how much of it is concrete and how much is of the sign? I'm not so concerned like with the font and colors. I'm more concerned that we don't have this huge block of concrete like going into that area, and it's a visibility and a aesthetic issue. So
Are you talking like Traverse Mountain type look or?
Like, is there going to be stone on the concrete? Is it just plain concrete? I mean, I am concerned about the design.
Yeah.
Again, for aesthetics and visibility. So I think if we're going to approve something that's above and beyond, that we do have a right to, you know, give input and get some feedback as to the specifics of the sign, because that is the entrance to this
Yes.
beautiful area, and those are my two concerns.
But they would have to, they would have to conform, any developer would have to conform to the design standards of the downtown Grove.
Of the Grove, of the Grove, yes, of the Grove. So just, I got a couple things, but let me see if I can answer some of the concerns. The one with the with the view, we have it right there. So it's right here on number two, B2. No sign should be erected at any intersection, improved for vehicle traffic within a triangular area in compliance with ASHTO. So there's some engineering ways that they can measure a triangle, and if you cannot see, and then that cannot be approved. So there's specifications how to approve a sign like this. In regards to the mass of concrete, that is a fair question. We don't have any, at least when we're presenting today, we don't have any specific design standards for this type of signs.
I think we need them.
Okay.
Especially in that area. If we're going to go that big of a sign, I think we need some standards for that type of signage that large in that area.
I just feel like most of these developments will be on main roads in and out of our city. And so I don't want, I guess I would just want a little bit of input on the design because maybe it's just my cynical nature as an attorney, but I just figure somebody's going to push the boundaries of this and make a cheap, ugly sign sometime just because they want to maybe advertise. I don't think it's likely because people definitely want to have a, you know, quality associated with their name, but at the same time, they could do something that really is aesthetically just not pleasing and doesn't really
Understand that, understand that.
the vibe we want for our city.
Let's keep in mind, though, let's keep in mind that it's only one sign per unified commercial development, and in reality, the total number of unified commercial developments that we have in our city is probably maximum of two.
That's probably
Because each one of them needs to be at least 20 acres and needs to be master planned. So it's not like anybody in the Grove can come and say, hey, I want this type of sign. Like, you won't qualify for it.
That's true, but the one we're talking about is 12 feet high. I mean, that's big.
It is big. Yeah, it is big.
And so I, I think there needs to be some standard to that that type of signage.
On the original application was, the applicant was proposing 20, so we reduced it to 12.
My feeling, my feeling on this is, as long as it doesn't, it's not an advertisement. I mean, this is, this is advertising Valley Grove, which is fine.
That's fine.
I don't want necessarily advertise other things, right? But this this type of a sign, even at that size, on that property, I have no concerns.
I mean, we've got one on the west side. It says Valley Grove on there. It's a pretty good size sign. Just sits down a little bit, but you know.
I think the signs are great. It's just, my thought is just, what if, what happens if somebody comes in with not as good of intentions and and does an ugly sign that we hate?
Well, I don't think, I don't think they could get, I don't think they could get approval. There's no place. This is the only place, given this design standard, that could work here, right?
Yes, probably another one.
There's none on like State Street where you could put together 20 acres and apply like water guardians?
No, because the project needed to be a master plan, and it need to be under one developer and stuff like that. So, yeah, no.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I have, Mayor and council. I think the applicant is here too. He can speak a little bit about his proposal.
Okay. Any other questions for Daniel, counsel?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council.
I think Marty wants to come up.
Well, the applicant would come up and
What'd you do to your foot, Marty?
Meet with us here.
Just had a little, little surgery. I had a little plantar fasciitis surgery yesterday, so it's going to be a little sore for a few weeks. So, but yeah, good to be with you again. Thank you for hearing this item. I've been working and excited to bring a little bit more placemaking to Valley Grove. Obviously, we've got some big signs. We've got a freeway sign. We've got some pylon signs. This is right on Pleasant Grove Boulevard, the intended location for this, and why we're applying for this is because you don't have a sign that would allow us to do something of this nature. We applied for 20 feet just because others had 20 feet. You look at the one at the outlets at 20 feet. We never, this 12 feet is sufficient for our needs and what we intend to do. That was always the design. It was just a matter of keeping a little bit of a range for this type of a placemaking sign. As Daniel said, we do have a unified commercial development area in the commercial side of Valley Grove Phase 6. The residential side is not part of that unified commercial development. Very specific type of allowed location for these signs. I don't know of any other 20-acre parcels that could be done, but not that something couldn't be redeveloped into that, and maybe there could be some further standards looked at there. I think whether or not we put more on the property, we have, you know, 40 acres on the other side of the road there that could be potentially another unified commercial development area. The way that that code was written up, it's separated by the public streets, so it's on one side or the other. So where our Valley Grove offices are in that area, that would be a good another location that, you know, when 2000 West does become a major corridor, when the interchange and frontage road system goes in, maybe there's some consideration on that side to have another welcome to Valley Grove type sign, not on the residential side, but on the commercial side. But we haven't, we haven't really gone that far to say we're going to put one there or out on North County Boulevard. Our intent right now is, as you're coming off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard, to do something here that is, hey, you've arrived, please turn in and come and see this amazing development. And so we wanted to, we've got two buildings opening up here in July, right next to this, and we wanted to get this in and finish off that corner. We've got a lot of landscaping to do there. This ties in that entire corner and finishes it up, and will make it look super nice.
So are you thinking like concrete for the base, like a stone or brick or just concrete or?
There's actually, maybe you can't see it very well, but there is a planter in front of this sign. So this sign is, it's pretty low. If you look at the way you come off, the interchange, and so one of the reasons of the size of it was, we actually went and modeled it. We made sure that if you're coming westbound on Pleasant Grove Boulevard, you can still see it across the road. That's why we had to get it up to be visible. And but then there's a planter said right in front that I think is about 18 inches tall, so there'll be kind of a raised planter bed in front of the sign with the Valley Grove name above it. So, yeah, it'll all tie into that whole corner. Your nice big RPZ that runs all of your landscaping for the interchange got relocated. We did that this couple weeks ago, so that's gone. The visibility of the corner and thing looks much better now. So that will, that'll look really good there when we get it all tied in. So that's our intent. We're, obviously, it's a very expensive sign.
Yeah.
We're not going to put a concrete sign there with a name on it. That's not our intent. It's going to look and be welcoming, and you know, the, obviously, with the value we're trying to build in that area on Phase 6, we want to make sure this looks like it's, it fits. And so that's what our intent is.
That's, that'll be nice.
So, yeah, we're excited to hopefully get this thing going and constructed here in the next two months.
Marty, you talked about two new buildings coming in. Who's coming in in those buildings?
You know, you're always asked the hard questions that
Eric, Eric, Eric.
But, no, we've got three more buildings that are hopefully coming next month that are right next to the office that I'm in, and then potentially another one right on the corner that we're finalizing that with, as you've heard, with Longhorn Steakhouse. That's out, I think, in the public. So that whole, the rest of the development there is coming and moving, and and a number of other ones that are in the works of finalizing things. So, but yes, we're excited. Development's still moving forward, and Pleasant Grove is is great, a great place to be, so.
Thanks, Sid. Thanks, Marty.
Yeah, thank you.
Always good to hear from you. Okay, anyone else like come forward? Is anybody else that would like to come forward to this public hearing before we close it? Anyone's coming forward. So we'll now bring, close our public hearing, bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I guess I turn this on. Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-007, amending section 10-19-2, sign definition, adopting section 10-19-9-5, to consider a new type of sign called project identification signs. These signs are intended to be large monument-type identifying signs on commercial developments that advertise the development as a whole instead of individual businesses.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. And we'll start off here with a roll call vote, and we'll start off with Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move, that is all of our public hearings for tonight. We'll now move to our action items ready for vote this evening, and we'll go to 10A to consider for adoption Resolution 2025-015, authorizing the mayor to sign the land sales agreement with RW Devcor LLC, Pete Rossi, for .08 acres of property located approximately 733 South 2000 West in Pleasant Grove, and the center is back to our legal counsel.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This item was continued from two weeks ago, our last city council meeting. There was some confusion about the property that was, we were selling, thinking that it included a public road and the way the parking was shown on the site plan. It looked like residents or customers would have to park on a public road and cross it in order to get to the business. We have clarified that with some discussion, and that road is not a public road. It actually was vacated several years ago when North County Boulevard was completed and that area started to develop. It was an old 700 South that crossed there. So that is not a public road. It will be a private drive. And sure. Daniel's got an updated image for you to look at, just to, so you can visualize it.
So these, the red ones are public streets, and as Tina mentioned, this road is not a public street. This road is actually a driveway, a drive aisle. Okay? It was in 2020, so it was five years ago when we do Dana Point Plan B, when we were working on this plat, the Wagner subdivision, that we vacated this road. So this road is actually not a public road. It's not a street. Google Maps has it like it, but it's not. So the actual, this is the actual access or entrance to the project. Okay? So I have this image as well, right here. We can take, we can take a look at the actual site plan. So this, again, is not a public street. It's just a drive aisle for the project. Okay? And the area that is for purchase, we can see, is from this corner right here to this corner right here. So it's this area right here. Okay? So this is the site plan that I thought that I was going to show you. Again, this is not a public street. It's just a drive aisle. It's pretty similar to, if we actually take a look at this other aerial map, right here. Oh, this is just to show you that when we did the plat in 2020, that the road was eliminated. This is the vacation of the, the vacation of the road. But we can see right here, this is a public street. This is a public street. This is not, and this is not either. Okay? So let me see. Yeah, that's what I needed to show you.
Okay, just to review, Pete Rossi and Devcor Development are purchasing 3,428 square feet. The price per square foot is $17.21. The total price is $59,000. I would note that there was a typo in subsection 1B, the cash due at closing. The dollar amount, the $59,000, was correct, but the text was left over from an old sales agreement that I didn't fix. That has since been fixed and will be corrected on the copy that needs to be sent to the mayor. The other thing I would note for the council pursuant to your instructions last time, even though we did clarify that it's not a public street anymore, I did add section E to other terms of sale. Closing is contingent upon final site plan approval of the project by the city. Okay? To address any of those concerns.
Any questions for council?
No, that helps. Thanks, Tina.
That was great.
All right, thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-15, authorizing the mayor to sign a land sales agreement with RW Devcor LLC, Pete Rossi, for .08 acres of property located approximately 733 South 2000 West, Pleasant Grove, Utah.
We have a motion from Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilmember Rogers. And we'll start out with Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now move to 10B, to consider for Resolution 2025-016, of the governing body of Pleasant Grove City, authorizing the mayor to sign the Fifth Amendment to the Solid Waste Recycling Collection Agreement with Allied Waste Services for the purpose of extending the term of the service contract and providing for effective date. We'll turn time over to our city administrator.
Yeah, as we were looking at our utility rates this year, specific to our garbage rates, our solid waste, it was brought to our attention that our contract was coming due, and that's when we started working on the extension. That's when we started working on what those rates were going to be. As Republic gave us our initial rates, we had a conversation As Republic gave us our initial rates, we had a conversation with them to see if they could bring those rates down, which they did bring those rates down. But we were, we are recommending that we extend our agreement for another five years with Republic Services. We've been with them a long time. They have done quality work in our community. We get, there are issues from time to time, but not very often. And we feel like they provide good service to the city. Mark Sherwood, who I think you, most of you are familiar with, with Republic is here if you have any questions for him. But you have any questions for me?
Counsel?
No. Just glad, glad we won that arm wrestle. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate your flexibility.
So is there any other questions, if not from the council, and ask for a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, to approve resolution 2025-16 of the governing body of Pleasant Grove City, authorizing the mayor to sign the Fifth Amendment to the Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Agreement with Allied Waste Services for the purpose of extending the term of service, service contract and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Most by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Jensen. And we will start out with Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to 10C and consider for resolution 2025-017, indicating the intent of the city council of Pleasant Grove, Utah, to adjust its common boundaries with the city of Cedar Hills, Utah, authorizing a public hearing thereon and providing for the notice of said hearing. Appicant is Dan and Karen Stewart and property is located at 4611 North 900 West and including properties located on Wedgewood Drive and Scott and Allison Glenn property located at 98094 North 4100 West Pleasant Grove. Turn the time back over to our city council.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Is this the new plug? Well, I may need some technical assistance to make a show on there. Oh, there we go. Okay. This is a visual of the properties that are involved in this proposed boundary adjustment. As the Mayor and council are probably aware, our northern boundary is very irregular with the city of Cedar Hills. The Stewarts, Karen and Dan Stewart at 4611 North 900 West, they're that piece right here, have, currently are using a septic system for their sewer service. Their septic system is in the process of failing and they have gone to Cedar Hills and asked to hook up to the sewer. And it's necessary for them to make a boundary adjustment into Cedar Hills in order for Cedar Hills to allow them to hook up to their sewer service. The law disfavors creating islands or leaving islands in boundary adjustments and annexations. And as you can see, once this piece is gone, if this goes to Cedar Hills, these other yellow areas right here that are in Pleasant Grove currently would be an island in the middle of Cedar Hills. So even though those property owners have not specifically requested to be boundary adjusted, they are being proposed to be boundary adjusted along with the Stewarts. State code, title 10, section 2, subsection 419, provides the process for municipalities to do mutual boundary adjustments. This proposed resolution declares our intent to adjust the boundary and include those properties and move them into Cedar Hills. The statute sets provisions for notice, which will be done for the public hearing. The public hearing is set for July 15th. And personal notice has gone out to each one of those property owners that we are considering the resolution tonight, which is not a public hearing, and notifying of the public hearing on the 15th of July.
Tina, real quick, we've met with most of the residents here. This is, we've laid some groundwork on this. So we had a meeting a few months back and then we've also communicated with them via mail that this was going to be proposed. So this is, I don't think a surprise to any of the residents out there. But this is setting up for the protest period, which I think.
Yeah, so they have, they have 60 days and up until actually July 15th at the public hearing to file a protest. If the statutory requirements have been met in terms of the amount of protests, it's 25% of the land area and 15% of the land value of the proposed area. If either one of those are met, then the boundary adjustment cannot proceed. So this is just the first step. It's just declaring the city's intent to make those boundary adjustments. But there's still other processes to follow before it's final. Any questions about that?
Can I, can I jump in again real quick? So this is something that has kind of started with Cedar Hills because to have somebody hook onto their sewer, they want them to be a resident of Cedar Hills. This is not something of staff that we are pushing either way. If, if two of these residents protest, it kills the deal. So if, we're going to see how the residents shake out. But we're not politicking this. We're not campaigning. We're not trying to push anybody one way or the other. If they want to, if they're okay to boundary adjust, then we'll do it. If they're not, then we won't. But I just, I don't want this to become a political firestorm for the elected officials that all of a sudden there's going to be posturing that the city's trying to push people to where they don't want to go. That's not our intent. If people want to stay, then there's an ability for them to protest and to stay.
Has anybody reached out to us?
We've had one property owner indicate that they probably would protest, but just one. And we haven't received anything formally yet.
So maybe you can help me understand the process a little bit more. So once we pass this resolution, is the train headed down the tracks? We can't pull it back. Only a protest can derail it?
No, you still have the opportunity. So at the end, after the public hearing, you have the opportunity to either adopt an ordinance adjusting the boundaries or not adopt it. So your final decision will be whether or not to approve that ordinance after the public hearing.
And then with regard to utility services that are being provided to these parcels right now, are they, are they receiving any utilities from Pleasant Grove City?
These, the parcels on Wedgewood are hooked up to our sewer currently and are receiving Pleasant Grove City municipal services.
And water and pressure, and PI as well, no?
We don't have PI up there.
Cedar Hills does have PI up there. That's for some of the residents. That's part of the reason they would maybe want to go is they can have access to PI.
They can't have it.
Even the culinary?
Yes, all of it. Cedar Hills would be responsible to provide all municipal services if the boundary adjustment goes through.
Is there any cost to us if this goes through?
There will be a slight cost. I'm, well, I don't, I shouldn't say slight. Cedar Hills has indicated they would not agree to do the boundary adjustment unless we compensated them for the condition of Wedgewood Road. It's not in good condition. And so we would be contributing some funds to make that, to do maintenance on that road.
But we don't know an amount that they've asked for?
Well, we're, it's something that's in the, in the mix. We're going to have to do it anyway, one way or the other. Either have them do it or we do it, or we'll probably do it for the.
Did Cedar Hills, did they indicate that they would accept like a chip and seal?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, verbally, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just hate for people to feel like we're trying to push them out. I agree with you, Scott. Like if it's better for them and that's what they want, then happy to facilitate. But if any of them want to stay.
The meeting we had, I think we had five or six of the 10 that came to the meeting. I've heard from a couple from email. And there's, I think, three, maybe four that we haven't heard anything from them. Because we made sure to mail physical copies with my email address on it. If they had any questions, they could reach out to me and my phone number. And when we had the, the meeting where people came, I mean, there was a lot of questions and we started working through some of the issues. But we made it clear in the meeting, you know, you guys can decide where you want to be. And, you know, the Stewarts are the ones that are in a tough spot. Because if their septic fails and they don't have access to sewer, we do not have a sewer line there. They're PG resident and we don't have a sewer line. Technically, it'd be their responsibility to build the sewer up to their house, okay? That's, that's, that's a lot of money.
Or get an easement to go through the back and, and hook onto our sewer in Wedgewood. But that again is financially, it's, it's a big burden on them. So they could get an easement to go through here and hook onto Wedgewood.
If their neighbor allowed them to do that. I mean, there's.
There's, there are other options, but they're very expensive and they're not optimal.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is our starting point to see, like I said, we've already took the temperature a little bit. But we'll know better in 60 days. If we have two, then you won't even have anything to vote on. It will kill it and it will be done right there.
Any other questions?
Okay, you know, this is, if you go up there and look at this, you wonder why we ever did it this way. Because it just should have been Cedar Hills.
Well, I can tell you, you don't want to know.
Tina still has battle scars.
I have PTSD from it.
The battle against the Manilaites to the Cedar Hills people, so anyway. It still goes on and a lot of those people have passed on, but it still goes on.
There's one parcel that says PG City. Is that just?
Yes, we do have a well there.
Yeah, so the old Manila water system was a separate system from Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills. Probably about 14 years ago, we dissolved the Manila water system and absorbed part of it into PG and part of it into Cedar Hills. So that was one of the wells that was part of that. So if that boundary adjusted into Cedar Hills, I mean, it's still our property even though it's not in our city limits.
And we have water lines in their roads. Other questions for? Okay, thank you. Any other questions, counsel, or do I have a motion on resolution 2025-017?
I guess I just have one question maybe for Neil, for Neil Luttrellton. You don't have a problem with this at all with regard to public works or anything like that?
Okay, counsel, do I have a motion?
I make the motion that we consider resolution 2025-017, indicating the intent of the city council of Pleasant Grove to adjust the common boundary with the city of Cedar Hills and authorize a public hearing thereon and providing for notice of said hearing.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lamone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Rogers.
Wait, that was Williams.
Well, it was Eric at first.
That's okay, I can. We'll give it to you.
Hey, everybody got a second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay back.
So we have a second and this is a roll call vote. We'll start out with Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our last item this evening, 10D, to consider for a resolution 25-018, adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending July 30, 2026 and provide for effective date. And we'll turn time over to Director Roy.
I'm just going to ask you if you have any questions. I think we went over most of it in the tentative. Should have been able, I don't know if everyone had a chance. We got it to you on Friday and then just thought a hard copy would be good. So if you have any questions for me, and I did bring you a candy bar. It's about the, that's about the only money I could find left, so hopefully that'll be a nice treat for you.
Any questions, counsel?
No. No.
Okay, now ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026 and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Jensen.
Or Williams and Jensen.
Well, Williams and Jensen again here, so anyway. So we'll start out with Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Okay.
We're based out of Mona, right, Todd?
Okay. That concludes all of our items ready for vote this evening. And we'll now move on for review of our next city council meeting and encalibrating things.
Well, no, we'll have some budget follow-up at our work session. We do have, working on a consortium with other libraries. There's actually began operations, but we need to finish up the legal side of it. We're hoping to have that on the city council agenda in two weeks. I think that's all we have so far.
Okay, sounds good. And counsel, do you have anything to bring up?
I have about 10 items. It takes us.
I've got probably at least 20. So we're going to keep, keep Councilmember Lamone busy.
You have anything for Sid? Eric?
I think we talked about the chamber golf term. I'm just missing Sid's team, but she can get names to me.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
You're not going.
Nope. Williams?
Nope.
Okay. But that, that.
I just have, I just have one thing. I just have one thing. Sierra, we're better than Lehigh. Okay, good.
Mayor, I do have a couple other items.
Okay.
And I don't know if these folks had their.
Well, yeah, I need to, that's right. Denise, do you have anything else for us?
No, I just can make sure that the truth is signed about the two meetings.
And Wendy? General Counsel? David?
Just real quick, a note, we're entering performance evaluation season and also benefit enrollment, open enrollment. We're going to have meetings next week. So stay tuned for more information on that coming soon.
We have open enrollment again already?
Already.
We just did that a month ago.
That's what it feels like. Yeah, we have to have it all done and submitted before Memorial Day. And then also a note, everyone is going to get a brand new insurance card. So be on the lookout for that before July 1st.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll turn the time over to our city administrator.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things, and some of this is calendaring, but also given, making sure you have an understanding what's coming up. So we have, as been noted, May 22nd, that Thursday, is when we are hoping to open the pool. The, and this is going to just be tentative as to how things are going there. As Neil has reported, as Megan's reported, they're on a decent pace. We feel good that they're going to get things done. But until we get our county inspection approval, we will tentatively tell people when we're looking at opening. But as soon as we know we can open, then we will make sure that that word is out everywhere. The re-grand opening is going to be on Memorial Day, 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock, as mentioned by Megan, which is going to be an awesome, awesome event. We have not unveiled the new pool toy, toy. It's bigger than a toy. The new pool structure, thank you. And we are, we're putting our PR people on this to do some sort of unveiling. Initially, we were going to unveil it when we opened and had kids there come for the first time. But because our grand opening does not necessarily coincide with when we're going to open the pool, we're probably going to do something more on our social media to unveil the new structure, the play structure. So if you want to be involved in that, as we put together, it's going to be a video of some sort and. involved in that, as we put together, it's going to be a video of some sort. And this isn't my specialty. So Lisa and Andy are going to be working on this. But if you want to be involved in that, let me know or let Lisa know so that when they start filming that, you can be a part of that. Ideally, that is going to be like, when it gets unveiled, would be like May 19th, 20th, 21st, or something like that. When that gets filmed, I don't, I don't know. That's going to depend on schedules. I just wanted to throw that out there if that's something you wanted to be involved in. So our unveiling for the structure will be more online as opposed to, to live.
Yeah, I, I would like to just challenge Councilmember Williams in a slide race down that structure.
I'll tell you what, we'll take care of the bucket.
I would, I'll take, I'll take that challenge and raise you, Councilmember Rogers.
Maybe we fill the, that bucket with ice water and see.
Okay, the ice water bucket challenge. I like it. I like it. Also, that day, as mentioned, 9 o'clock is when we're doing our Memorial Day program. And I have sent appointments for the re-grand opening and also for the Memorial Day program to you. So you should have those on your calendars. The, the next thing I want to talk about is June 7th. And this is going to be the grand opening slash ribbon cutting of Cook Family Park and kind of what we have in mind in regards to that day. So we are working with our staff and the Cook people. If you remember, we worked together to plan the groundbreaking, which we had 450 people at that groundbreaking. So that exceeded our expectations. I hope we're a little more grounded in what we think we're going to get. We're expecting a couple thousand people on June 7th. Our soft opening, in my estimation, we had about 1,000 people there, I think, for this, because we are opening the splash pad. And if it's 90 degrees that day, we're going to have a ton of people that are ready to go on this thing. So with that, 10 a.m. is when we're going to start the actual ceremony. We will have, and there's still some logistics being worked out, but just want you to have an idea of what the expectation is of you. We will have some seating available to you. The program is going to be relatively short. I'll say a few words, just kind of introducing everybody, introducing, recognizing the contractors and those that worked on the project. Maybe give a slight history as to how we got to where we are. We will have the Cooks say a few words and have the mayor say a few words. This, if you can picture the park, is going to be down by the footsall courts is where we're going to stage this. Then we are going to walk up to where the splash pad entrance is. And that's when we will actually have a ribbon and a cutting up at the splash pad. And then we're going to hit the button and open the splash pad. So we're, and there is a button.
Does the water?
Yes, that starts the water.
Like a faith button?
What's that?
Like a faith button.
A faith button?
A faith button.
Oh, no, no, it's real. Sorry, I don't want to give away spoilers. This is not like the tree lighting ceremony. But on this splash pad, the way that it is set up, if, if it isn't used, okay, so somebody starts the water. And if it isn't used for like a half hour, then the water turns off. Just conservation thing. There is a button you can go hit to start the water again. And it's really cool. It's the, it's the center of a shield. Is that right?
Oh, that's cool.
I mean, and that structure, is that done? Neil, can you, can they see that now?
It's not done yet, but it's halfway done.
It's pretty close. Anyway, and so the, the kids figure out real quick, when the water turns off, one of them will run, hit the button, and then they go back to playing again. Anyway, we're going to hit that button to get the thing started. We are also going to have four different exhibitions, a half hour apart. So at 11 o'clock, we'll have an exhibition of the skate park where we're going to have some pro skaters there. We're going to clear the skate park, have some pro skaters go out, do some tricks for about a half hour, or for 15 minutes, and just kind of show what, what, what pros can do on the skate park. Then we're going to have, a half hour later, on the pump track, we'll, we'll have the high school biking team where, again, we'll clear the, the pump track and then we'll have them come and do some cool maneuvers on the pump track for a few minutes. Just to kind of show people this is what can be done. A half hour later, we'll, at the footsall courts, we're going to have some people from US Soccer there. They're going to be some, they're not necessarily pros, but people that are really, really good at soccer. And they're going to run some exhibitions so we can see what footsall can look like on a high level. And then we'll move to the basketball court a half hour later. And they've invited the dunk team again and Cosmo's going to be there. And so we're not going to use our hoops for the dunk thing because we don't want to break our hoops. But there's going to be an exhibition there. And so we, we also are creating what we call a passport so that kids can have a passport and they can go to all the different facilities. And we will have a staff person there punching their passports so that they have a take home souvenir for this day. And so that's, this, that's just something for kids that, well, and adults, if they want to do that as well. Because it will be, we'll have one at the playground, we'll have one at the nine square, we'll have one at the other facilities. I think there's seven punches when it's all, or seven stamps when they're all done. The intention of what we're doing is to make this a little bit of an event, a lot, sorry, a lot bit of an event. We're going to have some photo booths there. We're going to have some other things. We're going to have food trucks. This is, we want to turn this into just a really big deal. We will have most of the festivities done by 2 o'clock. So from 10 a.m. to 2 o'clock, we will have kind of the organized things. We're, we're going to have a DJ there. We'll probably have the DJ there all day playing music while people are playing. We would like to close it with a drone show out of the park that night. The cost of that drone show is probably in the neighborhood of 20 to $25,000. So we do have funds in our care money that we could use for that. I, I'm just asking the councilors, are there any concerns if we were to move that direction to figuring out what it, what it would take to put on a drone show? That would be the, that would be the, and the last event of the day. The drone show would probably start roughly around 10 o'clock when it's fully dark. It will be right there at the park. So we have enough grass space for people to put down their blankets, bring their camp chairs, to just kind of almost fill that park and have, you know, have, be able to do this show. So is there any concerns if we head that direction with the drone show?
No.
I think it's a great idea. There, there's a cost to it though, huh?
There is a cost. That's why I'm asking. In my mind, here's my, my reasoning is this is going to be a legacy park. It's going to be around for a long, long time. We're trying to create a memory for people. The June 7th, 2025 is going to be one, a great day in the history of Pleasant Grove City. And so that's, the, the drone show, in my mind, just caps all that off. We're going to be doing all these other things. It's just, it's going to be, it's going to be a wonderful day. It's going to be a crazy day. Because we, we will, over the course of the day, we will have thousands of people. We know for that day that parking is going to be an issue. We'll have a lot of cars. We're going to work on a traffic plan. We're going to work on making sure we can get people safely across the street and things like that. That's something that we will be doing. But I, without the count, and like I said, if the council is a no on the drone show, then we haven't publicly announced it unless they're watching the meeting. So that is, if, if the council is concerned about that cost, then we'll just walk away from that idea and, and do the other festivities.
It's pretty awesome. The drone show is pretty awesome.
That's what Salt Lake City's gone to on the 4th of July.
Yeah. And we're still planning on doing our regular fireworks show on the 4th of July, but this would be in some ways a one-off event for us.
I like it. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to say. I think it would be awesome. I'm just concerned with the cost.
Yeah.
Do we know for sure that's the, that's the cost?
Yeah, they've, they've given us some parameters. We're actually meeting with them tomorrow to lock that price down. And the costs is depend on how many drones and for how long. And so I think a 14 minute show was about 20, 25,000 bucks. So.
So along with that, Scott?
Yeah.
We're kind of doing this as like a big event, rightfully so.
Yeah.
One of probably biggest projects for kind of a public space we've done maybe ever.
Yeah.
So what do we have that we've contracted with or that we're planning on to kind of capture these moments? Like if we're having a drone show that's supposed to be a legacy drone show, like I'd like to make sure we're capturing it. Not just like, oh, it's a one and done, but something where, you know, photo, video, where there's actually a record of it.
Like professional photo and video being done?
Exactly.
And value.
Yeah, value. And, and so we can revisit it on different anniversaries or whatever. I mean, it's, if we're going to put money into it, I want to make sure it's captured. Not, not just in the memories of all of us who attend, but for future generations and kind of things like that.
Yeah, that's a great point because it's true. We don't want to do this big thing and then forget about it the next day. There is, there's work being done on getting a drone so that we'll have drone footage of just the park that day. I mean, they're not going to, that drone wouldn't be there all day. But it would be there to capture some photos at various moments and some video at various moments. We're also working on having photo booths available for people to have a photo and then tag Cook Family Park or whatever and put it out on their own social media to kind of create a little bit of a buzz. We're working with Channel 2 or 4, 2, I think, Good Day, Good Days Utah. They're going to run a promotional thing leading up to that. That's different than what you're asking, Steve. But something that is, like, we don't have to promote this event pretty hard to have a lot of people show up. But again, we want to, we just want to make sure that it's out there. So we do have people that are in our group that are weary of, you know, capturing photos. They talked about buying some burner phones or whatever with cameras and just giving them to people and say, hey, go take some photos and then bring them back to us. Bring back those cameras and then we'll create a, a follow-up piece a week or two later.
But why can't we have like a professional photographer like taking pictures?
We could do that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just create a hashtag too, and people can send it to the city with that hashtag.
Yeah. One of the other ideas was capturing photos of people, having people send us photos from their experience and then creating a photo mosaic a year later. We would put in the park. If you've seen those mosaics, so it would be a big picture made up of very tiny photos. That would be a picture of something, whatever that's going to be. But there's companies that do that. And so that's, I mean, that would be one way to have something that would show the event a year later and kind of a reminder and something we could keep out there at the park. I like the idea of a pro photographer, somebody that we just are going to pay to say, we need 1,000 pictures out of you so that we have something for the archives, something we can use for future social media. You know, obviously, if we're going to use people's photos, we need permission. But we'll, we'll work towards making sure we understand that we're going to document what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, there's, I just want to make sure we have kind of crowd control and.
Yeah.
Things in place where people aren't waiting an hour in, in line to play nine square or something.
They might, that's, that's stuff we can't control.
Reality, but.
Yeah. My concern mostly is getting people across the street because the, the parking lot will be full. I'm assuming we'll have people parking on the surface streets. We'll have people parking down on the south end of that. They'll probably be parking up by the cemetery. I mean, we're just, we're anticipating cars everywhere and really only for this day. Like, we're not, when we talk about the events that are going to bring, bring people to this park, the splash pad during the summer is going to be a huge draw. We will eventually have soccer or other games in our fields, but those are going to be spring and fall. Those will not coincide with when we have the splash pad open. So our parking situation, I think, is in a pretty good place. But for this event, it's, it's going to be crazy. We will work to have parking stalls for you so that you don't have to park two miles away and hike in. And we'll, we'll, we'll get into the logistics and arrangements once we get a little bit closer to the event. I just want to kind of give you a snapshot as to what we've talked about and what we're prepared to do. So that's all I have.
Sounds awesome.
All right.
So anyway, Council, anything else? Okay, well, I think we're finished with this meeting. And so ask for a motion to adjourn and after which we will reconvene as our, as our local building authority.
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion adjourned from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. And we'll now call the order of the, of the hereby given of the local building authority of Pleasant Grove City, our LBA, on this Tuesday, May the 6th, 2025. And we, our first order of business tonight is to consider adoption of resolution 2025 dash zero one LBA, adopting the local building authority tentative budget for fiscal year 25 through 26. Denise?
So this fund will receive the monies from the Ruth, their lease proceeds, and in turn, will pay the bond, the 2022 A LBA bond. And so we're just adopting the budget for me to be able to pay that principal and interest in 2026. And I'll use the lease proceeds received from Ruth Theater to pay those.
Any questions? No, thank you, Denise. Last for a motion on resolution 2025 dash zero one LBA.
Mayor, I'll make a motion now. Chair, we're going chair? Chair. Make a motion to for adoption of resolution 2025 dash zero one LBA, adopting the local building authority LBA tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 dash 2026.
We have a, we have a motion by Board Member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Board Member Williams. And we'll start out with Board Member Rogers.
Yes.
Board Member Jensen.
Yes.
Board Member Lamone.
Yes.
And Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is to approve the June 24th, 2024 LBA meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Member Rogers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes all our business for our LBA. So I asked for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Council, from Board Member Jensen and a second from?
Second, or less.
From Board Member Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Do we do RDA?
RDA now.
RDA. Sorry, can you do our RDA meeting too?
Okay, where's, oh, the yellow one. Yeah, okay. We got one more. You go down to my pile. Okay. We'd, we'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Pleasant Grove City Redevelopment Agency, the RDA, on this Tuesday, May the 6th, 2025. And go to our first item of business, item number two, consider for adoption, resolution 2025 dash zero one RDA, adopting the redevelopment agency and the RDA tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 dash 2026.
This fund, the RDA fund is, we collect tax increment revenues for various projects in the city that we've, did projects for. We have the Gateway Project. We have Grove Tower and 1300 West, which is DoTERRA. So we have agreements with them. And so this is just adopting the budget when I receive the tax increment revenue from the Utah County for the property tax that I can pay that back out to the entities. So just need to adopt a budget. Give me the authority for that.
Questions for the director?
Nope.
No, ask for a motion on resolution, it's just our RDA redevelopment, on resolution 2025 dash zero one RDA.
I make the most important motion that we approve the resolution as read by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Lamone and a second from Board Member Jensen. And we will start out with Board Member Rogers.
Yes.
Board Member Jensen.
Yes.
Board Member Lamone.
Yes.
And Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our other item for our RDA this evening is to review and approve the 20, June 24th, 2024 meeting minutes. Do I have a? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from board member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from board member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from board member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, board member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?